Okay. Hi, everyone. This meeting's been called to order, Public Art Committee. And first of all, let's see if there's any public comment on any agenda items. Are there any requests for public comment?
Nope.
Okay, great. I'll make my my chairperson's report very brief. I just want to thank Naomi and Shannon for keeping up with everything and say that now that things are starting to look a little bit more normal, that the Public Art Committee will start meeting again on its own soon. Looking forward to hearing Naomi's update, which I'll turn it over to her for now.
Great. Thank you very much. So we are just reviewing what we're going to be looking at in coming joint meeting. Kite Pharma will be bringing back their rotating sculpture exhibit proposal. As you may recall, every two years, that particular private developer location has committed to replacing their slate of sculptures with new sculptures. So they'll be bringing some works for you to take a look at. And then we'll follow that up with budget update and review for the percent for art account. And then I believe we're going to be approving minutes. And that is then our manager update. And we'll be covering the hall mural. We have a special report on that. Just today, we're finalizing our youth activity sheet. So I was hoping to be able to send it to you all today, but we had a few changes to the Spanish translation. So we'll be getting that out to you very shortly.
Sorry, Naomi, I there was a little glitch. I couldn't quite hear what that was that that you were referring to.
Oh, I was hoping to send everyone our youth activity sheet that we created under the same initiative. But it's back of the designers for a few tweaks, and I will be sending that to everybody as soon. And a few more updates from manager. So Shannon will be talking about Art of Recovery and some other items. And I think that's it for me. Any questions on any of those upcoming items? I hope to say this to the joint group, but I'll say it now. Because this is a review of Kite Pharma's rotating exhibit, some of the criteria that we normally apply to a single proposal from a developer is tweaked a little bit. So mainly the the budget requirement, their budget is spread out over, I think, 30 years. So you'll see a budget in here that doesn't reflect their entire requirement. And because these are rotating, they're not meant to be. So some of the long-term maintenance, et cetera. Same. And each time they come back, each time they come back with a rotating exhibit, they don't need to resubmit a covenant. There's only one covenant that covers the. So those are a few of the modifications. And Shannon, that's it for me.
Yeah. And then I will just briefly, the boards and commissions. As things start to come back, the city council is coming back fully in person with no remote comment, public comment, April 12. And the state is starting to like kind of revert back to its regular laws about the Braun Act. And however, the city is looking at allowing boards and commissions. They would like to. I think for us, we would like to be back in person. And so we'll be kind of evaluating that, whether are the meeting space that we used to use available. So we may need to move around where we meet. Not necessarily when we meet, but there's a chance that we will be back in person in June for our next quarterly meeting. So we will keep you informed about that in progress with that. But I think that it would be much better to be in person with you all around a table versus in this weird setup. So I don't know if you all have feelings about that. Some some commissions are preferring remote. My sense with this group is that people prefer in person, but would love to hear any feedback that you all have.
I agree. Yeah, I would agree myself. I think that when it's a collaborative process, which I think the the Public Arts Committee is, I think that being able to sort of interact, see people's face, hear the tone of the voice, all of that kind of stuff. Sure, we can do it a little bit over Zoom, but it's somehow very visceral quality is really missing. So I would maybe in favor of that.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
That sounds wonderful. Yeah, I think a lot of people are eager to get back. Okay. Michael Baroff, any comments on that?
Um, yeah, as long as I can walk to where we're going, I'll be fine. The season. Yeah, I'm happy to be with you in person.
We're gonna start meeting in downtown LA.
Right, the train. Okay, I can take the the expo. That's good. That was the other contingency expo we're walking.
All right. Well, we'll let we'll keep you updated, but it's looking like a real possibility. So.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Okay. In terms of new business, Naomi, you have something on art in sanitation facilities?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a little presentation to whet the appetite and set the stage for coming back in June when we're talking about future budget. So included in future budget will be City Yards project, which has been on hold for a while and has come back in a modified state. So a while ago, you had heard that there was going to be an art opportunity at City Yards due to a very large renovation opportunity that was there. Due to the pandemic, that project got significantly cut. So the at least the locations for opportunities is very different. And we're still trying to understand what in fact is available. So since I don't have details yet on City Yards, I just wanted to give a little presentation on the kinds of projects that we might be considering as we create the scope for for this for this spring and summer. So here it is, art and sanitation. Next slide, please.
Naomi, could you just briefly like talk about where City Yards is and what?
Oh, yes. Yes, absolutely. So the City Yards complex is on Michigan Avenue across from Bergamot. And it is backed up to the recycling, the dump center. And right by the freeway. It's a fairly large parcel. I'm not sure exactly the size, but I'm going to be going over the site plan with the architecture soon. If you recall, the very long mural by Eva Cockroft that was the accession. And all the way across Michigan, I think 280 feet frontage. And because of this project, the one of the things that remained in the project doing a cut through run near driveway. So that's that's taken place. And there's going to, there is already a bus washing and service building that's been built. And then some of the existing buildings are being turned around or moved, changed in their usage. But generally, the site is serving fleet services, water, RRR, which is all the recycle and trash folks, the city's print shop, it's carpentry and paint studios. And I'd be missing something, but mostly everybody's under the umbrella of Public Works. So that's a little background on the site, but we'll have more for you.
So do we have any sense at all of of what we're looking at in terms of are we looking along Michigan Avenue? Are we looking for, I mean, I don't have a sense at all of.
Yeah.
What kind of?
Well, I believe that initially before the pandemic, there were plans to make the site quite a bit more public accessible. But since the cuts, publicly accessible options are pretty small. So we were looking at internal sites for placement of work, but since they may not be as public as we were hoping, there remain public publicly accessible areas just on the frontage. And we're going to talk to Public Works about what else is viewable or accessible. But in terms of putting giant physical manifestations of artwork, it may not be the most lubricious place. So we're.
I was gonna say, there's wonderful artists who actually make art out of recyclable materials. So that'd be kind of an interesting.
And also out of trash itself. I mean.
Exactly.
Yeah. So I wanted to give a little overview of the kinds of things that we've seen across the country. And they do kind of fall into a couple of different buckets. The first one being an artist residency. So one of the very first civic embedded artist residence was Merla Lottman Ukules, who since the 1970s has been basically started as an unofficial artisan resident Department of Sanitation and has been in residence ever since. So she did an amazing manifesto in 1969 about basically about essential work and especially about the work to clean and maintain, make possible acts of creativity. And so she she was doing, she's been doing various interesting projects at the sanitation department and has also sort of broke ground for civic embedded residencies across the country. Our opportunity is limited to a year. It needs to be done mid 2023. So we couldn't do a very long term residency, but it's one of the ideas is to have an artist who really embeds like Deborah Ashheim did at the fire department, really embeds in the life of City Yards in one or more of the various divisions. And uses their creativity to change or enhance the way things work. So here's an example of the Social Mirror from 1983. Merla lined garbage trucks with mirrors so that as they went out into the community, people saw themselves and the trash trucks together, which I think interesting. Next slide. Oh, I think, yeah. Oh, here we go. Um, this next one is just an example of artwork at a water treatments. At all. There's a couple of different treatments, one on the front gate, as you can see in the inset, and a wall. The wall reminded me a little bit of our Michigan Avenue. Next slide. And Kim Ables, Los Angeles artist, smog collector. She set various items out on her stoop and collected smog particles. And interesting environmental pieces. Next slide. And then materials. Here's a material that actually eats smog by converting nitrogen slides into less harmful substances. And I've seen at least two examples of these kind of projects using two different kinds of smog eating paint. Next slide. Thought this was an interesting one. It really speaks about climate change. It's been taken up by environmentalists as it goes across the world, although it was initially meant to be a critique on monuments. But these ice sculptures gradually melt and I had a little commentary on our warming world. Next slide. Here's another local piece. This is in Culver City, a set of various treatments around a sanitation, including sculpture, applied work on fencing and engagement work the artist did. Next. Also in Seattle or the area, a water treatment facility that had in the front, our people could see it. This is a rainwater catchment treatment. Next slide. This happened in 2016. The Land Art Generator Initiative, which does paper projects around the globe, came to Santa Monica and put as its prompt for folks to apply with projects that created art and infrastructure. And here's one of them. A purely theoretical project of for a desalinization plant that is also an artwork. So just the idea of functional artwork that might speak to some of the some of the processes that take place at City Yards. Next slide. Here we had the tool lending library. This one is the one in Berkeley. Again, thinking about themes of work and maintenance and making these things available to the public at large. A repair cafe, we did repair cafes for several years at the Camera Obscura. They were very popular, run by volunteers. And this was all about landfill diversion, so keeping items working and in people's homes. Next slide. LA County has a civic embedded artist residency program. TICIC? No, Creative Strategist Program. And they placed artists in various county departments. This one is a Vision Zero collaboration. The artist came and did work with the community science. Just an idea of how artists might be working hand in hand with some departments, divisions. Next slide. This is back to the New York City Department of Sanitation. Sanitation workers started to get very into saving items from the trash, inspired by one of the one of their coworkers, Nelson Molina. Basically created a museum in the sanitation department of all the things that he's rescued. And it's a sort of hidden gem. Next slide. And also including sanitation workers in art shows. This one, I think this is an annual show, sanitation work. Write them to create work and show it. Showcasing the creativity of employees. And I think this next one is the last one. I was just interested in city of LA as most as pretty recently put out an RFQ for artists for sanitation facilities. This is, they're going to be actually putting together a pre-qualified roster. So it's a little different from what we're going to be doing. But I noticed that in their RFQ, they identified their sanitation goals or their clean water watershed, solid resource of goals and conveyed that in the RFQ. So it's more of a reminder to to us to put it, things like that in consideration when we talk to RRR and the water folks. And that's it.
Thank you, Naomi.
Well, this comes to mind, given the proximity to Bergamot. It certainly would be interesting to consider cross-programming between the yards and Bergamot. And also the city also has various ecological programs, fairs or the such that maybe Bergamot could maybe be also used of that. So I'm just thinking about this, the cross-programming to attract more people, because obviously Bergamot attracts those of us interested in arts, and then they can go across the street. So this is.
Definitely.
Good.
Definitely making things more public. Yeah.
Yeah.
On a on that note of programmatic, is it okay if I jump in with a thought? This is Marty.
Yeah, Marty.
Oh, great. So well, there are two children's books, actually, that come to mind that are wonderful for programmatic and just other inspiration. You know, you had mentioned one of the resources was a museum. And so one book is called Aunt Ippie's Museum of Junk. And the other is called The Tin Forest. And it basically, that particular story is about a gentleman whose home is located proximal to within a junkyard. And he basically every day starts to reimagine the the discards that are around him and just trans into transitions it into a really magical place made out of all of these found and, you know, sort of objects that were let go of, let's say, cast away. So that just is a sweet, a sweet connection if anybody has interest or that shines some inspiration.
Thanks, Marty. Naomi, will you be giving that presentation to the Arts Commission as well?
This was just for you guys.
Thank you. Okay, well, it was it was good. Really appreciated that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, look forward to hearing how this progresses.
I think the only comment I have is let's not sweep the trash under the rag rug. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think this is like an introductory conversation around what we might do with the call for artists with this. We wanted to, Naomi, wanted to give you some ideas of different things that have happened in different areas, different cities, and to really help us inform what this new call for artists is going to be moving forward. So this will be coming back to you once we've had a chance to work, meet with Public Works and do a little more kind of in the pre-work around what's what's possible with this call for artists. But this will be the next big call for artists that we have.
Thanks for keeping us in the loop at the at the beginning formative stages. It's it's great. And we look forward to seeing where we go from here.
Yeah, it's an exciting opportunity. And I think one of the things is you've got your art audience at Bergamot, but you've also got a bunch of city workers that might not be in the arts world and not thinking of arts as relevant to them and how we can use this opportunity to give our essential workers some opportunities to experience the arts in their day to day lives that would enhance enhance their 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 time working in Santa Monica, you know?
Absolutely. And also
Great.
An opportunity to shine a light on what they're doing for the rest of the community to, you know, to see. Sorry, was someone else wanting to say something? All right. Who's doing announcements and upcoming meetings? Shannon?
Well, I already talked about the next meeting. It'll be, oh, I will say, and this is gonna, I'm gonna bring this up in our joint meeting itself. The city has recently declared or designated two new city holidays. One is Caesar Chavez Day, which will be on this Monday. The other is Juneteenth, which will be acknowledged or celebrated on the third Monday in June, which is when we would normally have our regular June meeting. So we're going to need to reschedule our June meeting, but we are planning to be and at that meeting, we will have the 2022, 23 Public Art Budget coming before you. So it'll be another joint meeting. Hopefully it'll be in person. And so it'll need to be a different day and time than June 2020.
All right, great. Thank you. So how are we doing? We're doing well. Just about time to adjourn our Public Art Committee meeting and move into our our joint meeting, isn't it?
Yes. And we have Michael Masucci here and Mary Elizabeth Michaels. We have a quorum of our pack now that Francois has joined us. Hi, Francois. So we're just gonna wait for our other Arts Commission members. Hi, Mary Elizabeth. Nice to see you.
And you can hear me too.
Good to hear you.
Oh, yeah. Hey, Mary Elizabeth.
Hi, guys.
So we'll just wait a minute or two and see hopefully that we have an Arts Commission quorum. And we'll be able to proceed with actionable items.
Yes.
Hello, can you see me?
Yes, Carl, welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Carl's question. Will you and LaShawn be presenting?
Yes.
Hi, Michael. LaShawn is on. I think Carl's gonna do most of the talking, but.
Yeah, I'll do the talking. He'll do the 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 images.
Okay, but I'll have the honor of introducing both of you. So so welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just gonna wait another minute or two. Hopefully our.
We have Kathleen Zadikian is joining. Kathleen, you wanna unmute or turn your camera on so we could say hello?
Shannon, can can you tell me there's a there's someone on the bottom with a phone number? Is that a commissioner? As if so, I think we have a quorum.
I think the 917 is LaShawn. Is that your your number, LaShawn?
All right.
No, it's not. No, I'm actually on my computer, so I'm not on my phone this time.
Okay, because you're not showing up in the list oddly of participants.
That's right.
Yeah, very odd. But maybe your son isn't a Jonathan Carr. Hi, Jonathan. But she Lori Baroff, Michael. Lori Bearoff, Michael, Kathleen. So we do have a quorum. Who is the 917 number? Gonna unmute you? This Chalice, Eric?
Yes, thank you for unmuting me. That's me.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a quorum of both bodies.
All right. Well, in that case, I'm going to formally begin the meeting. This is a special joint meeting of the Arts Commission and the Public Art Committee, and we're here to consider a ongoing process that happens every two years. But first, we're gonna get a roll call of the Arts Commission and the Public Art Committee, and then we will begin with the presentation. Thank you.
Evening Commissioners, this is Nathan Bernbaum. I'm the Administrator for Cultural Affairs, and we'll start by taking role for the Public Art Committee. Committee Member Vaughn. Committee Member Subramanian. Committee Member Pugh.
Yes.
Committee Member Gettleman.
Present.
Committee Member Doherty. Committee Member Barr.
I'm here.
Committee Member Baroff.
Here.
And Committee Chair Yaya.
Here.
Great. And now for the for the Commissioner. Commissioner Zadikian. Commissioner Yaya. Commissioner Swimmer. Commissioner Subramanian. I think she's here, right? Deepa, you're here, right? Is that correct? I think she said yes in the first round.
Kathleen Zadikian is here, but we can't hear her. Kathleen, I'm gonna try unmuting you.
Well, I did hear Kathleen. I thought I heard. Oh, I see. I did. That's right. I didn't hear. And 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 what about Deepa?
I do not see Deepa.
Oh, okay. I thought I heard a yes when I went through on the Public Art Committee.
I think it was someone else.
Okay.
Kathleen, can you hear us?
Yes.
No, Kathleen? Now she's back.
Back.
There's Kathleen.
Yes, I see her. Okay. Commissioner Michaels, I'll continue.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Chalice.
Here.
Vice Chair Baroff. Oh, hi, Eric. Thank you. Vice Chair Baroff and Chair Masucci.
I am here.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all. And as I began to say, Santa Monica benefits greatly from a lot of the public art that's brought to us actually by the private sector. And among the exemplars here is a site on 1800 Stewart, which is like a sculpture garden art walk managed by Kite Pharma, and they have a rotating policy where every two years they replace the multiple sculptures that they've commissioned and presented and curate a new body, and it is time for their latest set of works to be presented to us for joint approval. Consideration first by the Public Art Committee, and then should Public Art Committee deem the material ready to go on to us, then the Arts Commission would would consider approval. We have two guests representing Kite Pharma and the curator. We have LaShawn Parker from Kite, and we have curator Carl Berg, and they're going to give us a presentation on the works that they have selected. And I will turn it over to you to you guys, then welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So I'm gonna share my screen and Carl, as you want me to proceed to the next page, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Share my screen now. All right. Hopefully you could see my screen here. Again, along 1800 Stewart Street, we have a display of artwork and we're looking to replace the existing artwork with new work, and I'll let Carl take take it on from here. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So the every every couple of years, we switch out the artwork and I was trying to, I mean, I did the last project and the project before, and they have so kindly asked me to do it again this year. And so basically, I, you know, tried to select work that is diverse in many different ways, from concept to appearance. We also have a nice group of artists who are diverse backgrounds, several are not born here in America and are immigrants. But first and foremost, I think the work is is important and what they're doing and how it will work within the site at Kite. So the list is there, I think. I don't know if you can see the whole list, but and I see that one of them, some misspelling, but David de Michelle, there's an I after the M. Anyways, so let's go to the next the next image and the next one after that. Okay, so this is a proposal by China Adams, who is quite well established here in Los Angeles, has shown at some really fine galleries and such, and he teaches at USC. I chose her because to make to make a presentation of this project because I think it's a very interesting artist, both, you know, in the way the work ends up looking, but also conceptually, I really liked her presentation that she made for the project. She had made another one before that I didn't think was quite as well, and then she remade this one. And so basically, what you're seeing is is a sculpture that by itself is not the whole story. You you know, you you read the QR code and then it goes to a video of a drone flying over the ocean. And so I think with today's technologies, you know, it's it's really cool to be able to integrate both technical art and physical art together in a way that is interactive with the public, and I think she's done a really great job of that. And I don't know if you have any questions or do you want to do those all at the end?
Oh, you can continue, and if there are questions, you know.
Okay, okay. And okay, then we're moving on to the next artist. David de Michelle is a longtime veteran of the L.A. art scene. He's both known as a painter, photographer, and sculptor, and this particular piece is one of the pre-existing pieces in the exhibition. I think there's two or three of them. It's an aluminum sculpture, abstract. It's a very, very nice piece. It's quite tall, almost, I think, close to eight feet tall. And it's made in a very spontaneous process of sort of forming foam, and then from that foam, it's cast into a aluminum sculpture. He does a lot of installations that he art sort of miniature installations that he then photographs, and they look like fake galleries. I mean, they look very real. Most people think they're real. And this this sort of assembled piece, it comes actually from one of those installations, the concept of it where he's taken broken bits of plaster and made them into these fabulous installation in his sort of fake galleries that he then photographs, and then the photograph ends up being the artwork. But in this case, he decided to take one of those miniature sculptures and then make them very large. And so this is what what he has chosen and I picked to present for the project. So I think we can move on to the next one, and he's got it all figured out how to bolt it into the ground, as you can see here, and you know, he's very experienced at these kind of things. So it it's should be very nice in the spot that we've chosen for. So the next one is Ashley Hagan. This is one of the other existing sculptures. It is actually works a lot with things related to her her past and her. So she recreates like little environments, and if you can click through to the next image. So within the sculpture itself, there's like little cubby holes that you can peek into, and they're often modeled after her childhood home. I think she grew up in in Iowa, and and so there's a kind of a nice sort of nostalgic feel to them. There was, of course, the question of it being wood and how would that last? And the wood would be properly treated, you know, for outdoor purposes. And so and what we had, what we've had with, you know, wooden sculptures, we had one not in the current iteration of the of the exhibition. We had one in the prior one and from about four or five years ago that was that was wood and you know, in the end, because these are two-year, you know, it only has to be up for two years. It's it's it will weather that time. And if there's any sort of issues with with it not looking good, she'll she'll come back in and fix it. So in terms of, you know, if the paint cracks or something like that, you know, that that can always happen. So we can move on. Yeah, here you see more of the little windows, and here you can kind of see into the little cubby holes. And it's really nice because it gives a chance of people to sort of kind of ponder the sculpture and sort of, you know, spend more time with it at a at a close view as well as at a greater distance. Blue McRide is still quite a few public sculptures. She's very well known for her sort of sculptures that are made with these kind of lacy feel, although it's metal and it will be made for outdoors, does have kind of a lighter feel to it. And they're just really terrific works. And I think she lives, she might not live in Santa Monica, but I know she lives in the area, maybe in Venice. She has a studio close by. And we, moving on to the next, Phyllis Green is a Santa Monica resident, and she has a really interesting sculpture here that is a combination of 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 astroturf and then the sculpture on top. And this is reflected in a concept that is, you know, just read it from her own little note here. It's based on a sculpture that she saw in Kansas City replicating a fiberglass Hereford Bull from 1953. And so she is sort of repurposing that with a a sheep, and it's dealing with the idea of the sustainability using the sheep to 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 munch away at at potential places where there could be fires. And so to to keep the vegetation that it doesn't get overgrown. And this is actually fairly common practice also in other countries where the sheep can sort of naturally manage the hillside. And apparently, at Getty, they they have this flock of sheep for this exact purpose. So I thought that was really cool. And Phyllis is is very accomplished artist, has done quite a few public works over the years, and at some point, she could have even been on one of these commissions. I'm not sure, but but she's she's a local known known artist, and I think her work is terrific. And we move on to Maz and Sammy, who who I've chosen to have two sculptures. They're cast resin. They'll be be approximately seven feet tall, the base being a foot tall. And these are really gorgeous. You can't really tell. These are mockups because he hasn't made them yet, but he's done other things like this in the past. He has an interesting background. He was born in Iran, was schooled in Madrid at the same art school as Picasso, Dalí, and others. And he's incredible in terms of his his knowledge of mold baking and etching and all these different processes. And he gives us sort of a a nice kind of twist to the work. I think it's pretty, looks pretty basic, you know, but when you see these kind of works up close, they they they've they've they just have a really beautiful surface, and they'll be a nice at the enter point. So the one, the the first image of the sculpture at the site, that would be sort of the entry from Bergamot Station, which I think it's always nice to have a nice bright sculpture there or something to draw people in from a distance, because of course, all the people go there to see the galleries, and then they see like, oh, there's a sculpture there, then then that draws them in, and then he would have a second sculpture placed further into the into the into the into the site, but sort of halfway toward toward the front. Now Julio Sims is another artist who has kind of more on the conceptual side. I place him similar to China Adams, and, you know, so he has a really interesting concept of sort of having this turnstile within the 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 exhibit. And so kind of giving the sense of this sort of entry way or a way of bringing yourself into this exhibit. I guess it's sort of if it's in the middle, it sort of pass gives you a passage between the middle and the the front part and the back part. And I think it'll be also really kind of nice. Sometimes in an exhibit like this, it's always like one to have something that sort of questions the, you know, is this a sculpture? What is this? And I think that's that's always very interesting in an exhibit to have something that sort of disrupts the flow of the other things, just to keep it kind of edgy and interesting. And I and Julio has done a lot of public sculpture and hold on one second. I have to grab some. Sorry, I have some family issues here to take care of. So anyways, so okay, moving on to Seenon Williams. Seenon Williams is a painter, sculptor, makes a lot of drawings, a lot of works on paper, and I really liked his idea of like having a sculpture as a bench because the I've been, you know, doing this project for quite a while, and it's an area where people do sit, sometimes eat their lunch there, and I think the placement that he had in image number one, the top one on page two, that that's not gonna work, but I think the one where it's sort of more inset, I think that would be a really nice placement. Also, again, it's it's one of these things that both functions as a sculpture but also a bench, and I kind of like that idea. You know, is to have have something in there that's also functional. And moving on to the last sculpture by HK Zamani, is another interesting artist who born in Iran, immigrated to California when he was in high school, and then ended up going to the Claremont Graduate School where he got his MFA in fine arts, and he's really known for his performance art, his sculpture, and also his paintings, wall sculptures, all sorts of different things, very interesting artists. And so what we're seeing here is the newest series of works that he does that are based on sort of figures. Sometimes they're placed in front of canvases with sort of the reverse image on them. Very interesting works. The ones that he makes for the gallery are tend to be made made out of cardboard, but of course, for this project, it will be something that'll be more sturdy. In this case, this is would be cut steel. that'll be more sturdy. In this case, this is, would be cut steel. And I think that's the last artist.
Yeah, that is the, the last artist. We just have our financial arrangements with our artists on the next pages.
Oh yeah. So basically each artist has a budget of seventy five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars for install and de-install of the sculptures, which we've done, put that in their court. So because you know, they're, they're able to handle their own work, you know, and know what they need to do with it. And I have been there for every install to first, you know, to just to make sure everything is done. And often they, they've hired also people, if they're not capable themselves of doing it, they've hired in a professional art companies, like sort of like an LA Packing or one of those other companies that, that installs art professionally. I know several of the artists have done that in the past. And then, and then the so we start out by, you know, giving them a budget to start the project. And then as we go through it, then they get different payments. Just to keep them, keep them going on that. And then five hundred dollars is held back until for the de-install at the end of the project, at the end of the two years. And then we pay them that. And then the, the curator expense is listed there. And the total expense is below there.
And I just put a summary here that we're required by a development agreement to switch out the artwork every 12 to 24 months. And the last installation was in Q3 of 2020. And we're hoping to install the new artwork later this year.
Thank you very much, LaShawn and Carl. We will open discussion. Are there any questions from either PAC or the Arts Commission? Yes, please go ahead.
Me, Michael. Yeah. Hello.
Hello.
Lovely work. It's always beautiful environment to see these sculptures there. I guess this is the same question I think I ask every year is, I mean, the idea of for the public who walk through this to be able to learn about the work intrigued by that first artist who had the little code there. Have you considered it for other arts? Or have you created pamphlets? Or I think we've talked about this any number of times. Other ways so that the public can learn about the art in some way, but that, those, so many places are using these codes for people just to scan and look on their phone. I guess it links to a website or a document that you create. Seems pretty
Yeah. I think I haven't, but I think it's a great idea. I mean, that possibly could be included in the signage that, that, that I mean, I could, you know, I don't know technically where it would have to be hosted. And I would, that would be obviously a Kite Pharma thing. I mean, I, I you know, to put something in a smallish website is pretty easy. I definitely could do that, you know, once the work has been installed, photograph the work and then you know, have the explanations that we're seeing here, you know, in terms of the theme behind it. And the artist could write a little paragraph on that. And there could be maybe a link to their website. But that, that wouldn't be that hard to do. I think it would be just a matter of, you know, I could you know, assemble all the images and such, but I don't know what the legalities are and what website would have to host this in terms of the company and their, their. And I'm sure LaShawn is going to have to ask some of the lawyers or stuff of Kite to answer that as well. But it would be, I think that would be the only thing of where we, where would we host it, you know? And who, who would be hosting it? And I think that, but I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, creates interactivity. I mean, I think that's a really, so many places are using that now. So thanks for considering it. Just an idea. Thank you.
This is Lori Yaya. And yeah, I think that's a good idea, Michael. I, I support that. And another possibility to consider is whether Cultural Affairs could host it. I don't know. The web, just the, the website that could, you know, with the explanations if, if it was needed.
To, to answer your question, I don't know if you were posing it at me, Lori, I think you might have been, but it, the city is transitioned to a new website and so hosting things that limited than it was in the past. So I'm not sure that that would be possible, although it's something we could certainly look into.
Thanks.
Because may I ask, you know, Shannon, do we post, you know, on the city site? These percent for art projects, does that have built into how we acknowledge that program within the city? Do we have visuals of other percent for art work?
That's really good question. We use the third party system called the
You're going in and out.
What's that?
Yes, sorry, Shannon, you're breaking up and very little of what you're hearing is being heard.
Oh, sorry. I don't know. Is this better?
Yeah, you're back.
Okay. We, we do use a third party system called Public Art Archive to host our public percent for art collection. We certainly could put private percent for art pieces up within that. And that's something that does allow a lot more flexibility than our city's website. So that's something that Naomi and I could definitely discuss.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Great ideas. Any other thoughts, questions?
I have a quick question. I do triple second the, the idea. That's a great idea about the art quotes, Michael. Fantastic. Um, this is just because I haven't been on the commission long enough to have gone through this iteration once before. I'm just wondering really fast, and you can direct me, LaShawn, to someplace else, but I haven't heard of development agreements that allow for like a rotating gallery versus permanent installation of one or two pieces. I'd love to learn more about how that works. If somebody could just tell me if that exists in other places or if other people in Santa Monica do that. I just, I'm fascinated by it and love it.
I'll stop sharing. Um, well, for our end, for our specific facility, when we purchased that land, which actually we, we have a ground lease with the city of Santa Monica.
Okay.
As a result of that ground lease, part of the transaction was that we had to agree to the development agreement that was in place with our previous, with the previous owner of the facility. And so there's certain guidelines that we have to go by. The artwork is just a portion of it. There's other outreach activities that we do with the city, with the, with Santa Monica College. We have interns that come in that are residents of Santa Monica or attend Santa Monica College. So there's just a number of different arrangements that we have to abide by on an annual basis. And we do provide a summary of our activities as it relates to the community as well. To, to one of the departments there at Santa Monica, but the artwork was one of the agreements.
That's rotate.
And Mary Elizabeth, as LaShawn has said, this is a legacy project which held over from the previous occupant, which I believe was a genus, a Jesus. It was another a Genesis, right. And, and it has a very different kind of structure in that the the cost of the project was spread over many, many years instead of stipulated for one commissioned work. I don't actually know of any other such agreements in, in Santa Monica. I'm probably wrong, but I, I don't know of any others. And this has been going on for quite a while. And again, was, was originated way before the tenure of any of us. So, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to share that with other cities just because I think it, it allows for a different kind of engagement with the art over a longer period of time. So interesting. Thanks again.
Absolutely. And it, and it, you know, it enfranchises many, many more artists. And in many cases, if not all the cases, the art survives after the exhibition and can be shared elsewhere. Existing art can be presented. It's, it's a great, it's a great venue.
Do we have this written up anywhere?
There might, there might be a in some of the earlier documents, there may be some thing that, that I could dig up. Sean might have something too, but there are some documents from the original Agensis. I didn't do the very first one with them. I think I did the second or that Agensis did, or might even have been the third. And so I think it was the third. So I can try to dig up and see what, what, if I can find anything and
Well, that'd be great. It's not too much problem. I would love it. And you can share with Shannon, she can share with me. That would just be really fascinating to share with other people. Um, even outside elected officials to know about it for other cities. So, okay, I'm done. Thanks again.
Mary Elizabeth, I would say that we probably have it within the development agreement. And a lot of these development agreements are like kind of negotiated one-on-one based on specific So we could certainly try to find the documentation. All of that should be.
Yeah, I could try to, I have, yeah, I do have a copy of the development agreement. So I can pull out that portion and send it over to you.
Thank you. All right. Appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you all. Um, any other
A quick comment. I can't figure out how to raise my hand on this thing, but the just FYI, about putting these sculptures on the website. You may or may not know that each one of them, or at least each one of those sites is a landmark in an online reality, augmented reality game called Ingress. Now, what's kind of intriguing is that the, the game is not exactly super active at this point. I was just checking it and all the pictures are of the sculptures that were there the past year or the year before, et cetera. But it's kind of a, you know, an interesting aspect of of our augmented reality city that these are all registered as what's called portals. And there are two factions in this game, the resistance and the enlightened who fight over them regularly and steal them from one another and all that stuff. I can send you some pictures and, and explanations if you're interested.
Yeah, we could turn the sites into virtual gaming. So people could be running around with their Pokis or whatever.
Oh, it is. I mean, basically you need to be close enough to the portal. And in each case, in this case, each one of the, the sculptures, and then you can take goodies from them. You can put weapons on them and then you can link them together to create geometric shapes. It's like a game of Go essentially, but it's virtual. It's, it was, it was interesting. People played it a lot about 10 years ago and it's still a bit, it's a little bit quieter. It was, it's actually replaced by Pokemon Go. It's the same company, same subsidiary of, of Google.
That's great. Why don't I turn this over now to Lori Yaya, who is the Chair of Public Art for their consideration? And, and then when they make a decision, we will proceed.
Okay, public art committees, members. Anyone, would anyone like to comment or say anything as we consider this? Like to remind you that that our role in this is really to take a look at it as, from a bit of a, of a, of a meta distance. And just recognizing that, that this is private percent for art, not public art. Okay.
Well.
Michael.
Yeah, I mean, just acknowledge, thank you, Carl. You do a wonderful job curating. You pick out a very interesting artist and and, you know, enhance the environment. And again, all it is, we would like to see more people enjoy it. That's the, you know, the end game. And however we play that out, so.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I think it's, that's great. We would love that.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, Michael. Carl, fabulous job. Really like the variety of work and and the quality of it and the placement of it. I think you did a terrific job. And LaShawn. Great work.
I'd be freezing a little bit. My internet seems like you guys are going in and out. So I'm not sure if you asked me a question or not. I'm sorry.
Just thank you for your work on this.
Oh, you're very welcome.
And I, I want to thank LaShawn as well. Knowing that it's, this is sort of 100% my, my, my job. And I know it's not 100% her job. And she's been really great throughout the process and being the, the link to Pharma for me. And it, it is a lot of work. Just Mary Elizabeth Michaels. I just, these projects require a company to be really engaged because it's totally outside often their ballpark. And you have to work closely, you know, because there's so many artists, so many, every, it changes over and all of this. So whoever decides to do it needs to understand that when they do it, it's going to require more work than buying one sculpture and just leaving it there.
It, I guess it's not just like, you know, time or money. It's definitely a lot more engagement and a lot more work. But yes, thank you for pointing that out.
But because, because of all that, I think it makes it a lot more interesting.
Agreed.
Anyone else?
Things we did different to this year is we engage our staff facility and we
We're losing you, LaShawn.
I think what, what she was saying, because I, I know that, that the company also sort of different people at the company kind of voted on a bit on like which ones they liked and which, and things like that. So it was really a, a nice process to go through some participation on their end.
Great idea. Yeah.
Lori, do we have a motion?
I was just making sure we had all of our comments. And if no other comments, would anyone like to make a motion to approve, to recommend that the Arts Commission approve this proposal? Michael Barrow? So moved?
You did, Michael.
Second?
Marnie, I move.
Marnie?
Yes. I move to make the exhibition.
No, you moved to recommend to the Arts Commission that the, to recommend that the Arts Commission approves this proposal?
Yeah. Yeah.
Got it. Do we have a second?
Michael Barrow seconds. Okay. All in favor? Do we, do we need to take?
I think we need to call, I think we need to do roll call quickly. First of all, the, are we still, the members Vaughn, Subramaniam and Darty are still not present? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So for the voting, PAC member Pew. Do you have your microphone on?
He's muted. He's muted.
I'll come back to him. Member Gittelman?
Here he is. He's on now.
Okay. Gwen, we're voting on the motion to recommend to the Arts Commission that they approve the updated artwork for the Kite Pharma site. Do you vote yes or no? Or abstain? Still can't hear you, Gwen. We'll come back to you.
Can he put it in chat? If his microphone isn't
That's fine.
Nathan, do you want to move on from Gwen?
I'm happy to come back to Gwen. Marnie, did you vote?
I vote yes.
Committee member Barr?
Yes.
Committee member Barrow?
Yes.
Chair Yaya?
Yes.
And then Gwen is going to vote in the that's four, four yeses that, that carries, the motion carries. Resume. Is that correct, Lori?
Yeah, the motion carries. Thank you all. Sorry we couldn't hear your voice. Gwen, Commissioner Pew, not Commissioner, committee member. And sorry.
The motion, motion carries.
Yeah, motion carries.
And so now that the Public Art Committee has approved, it will go to the Arts Commission. So the Public Art Committee has formally recommended that the Arts Commission approve the curated proposal by Kite Pharma. And now the Arts Commission is, any questions, discussions before? Go ahead, please. And please speak up because I can't see everybody. So just just speak. Okay, I don't know if it's just my transmission, but the sound that was happening was basically inaudible. So I don't, I don't know who spoke or what was said. I deeply apologize. Other people can hear.
It may have been background noise.
Can you hear me though?
Yes, we can hear you. Everybody have a hard time.
Okay, cool. Okay. Any discussion thoughts or does anyone wish to make a motion based on what the Public Art Committee is recommending to us?
I move to accept the Public Art Committee's recommendation that we accept Kite Pharma's proposal for this latest, including these latest artists for their presentation.
Thank you, Mary Elizabeth. Is there a second? Is Lori, did you just second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table brought forth by Mary Elizabeth and seconded by Lori to accept the recommendation of the Public Art Committee to approve the latest round of curated sculptures to be put at 1800 Stewart in their Art Walk Sculpture Garden as part of their ongoing rotating presentation. Can we now get a vote of the present commissioners?
Yes, Commissioner Zadikian.
Yes.
Commissioner Yaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Swimmer and Subermanium are still not with us. Commissioner Michaels?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalice?
Yes.
Commissioner Baroff, Vice Chair?
Yes.
And Chair Masucci?
Yes, congratulations, Kite Pharma and Carl. Unanimous approval of your continued excellent work. Congratulations to all involved and to the artists in your show. Thank you so much for your presentation and for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy to get one, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We're now going to move. Naomi is going to give an update on the public percentage for the art here in Santa Monica. This is not an actionable item. It's just information for us, impossible discussion. But, but no vote will be needed. And please take it away, Naomi.
Thank you very much. Shannon is going to help me out with a little bit of slideshow magic. This is our second of two parts viewing the last two fiscal years. Come back to you in June with the actual budget. So this, in November, we talked about our conservation account, our conservation fund. Now we're going to be talking about percent for art, which is our. So because of pandemic disruptions, we haven't been able to get to your get a budget for each year to you. So I apologize for that, but we're back on track in June. We are including budgets for projects that are complete and projects that are still in motion. So some things are less than others. Also note that in past years, we had instituted a system that reserved a project allocation administration and support and towards collection care from each project. But we found that that was a little unwieldy. So we've reverted to actually creating using each project's funds for collection care, installation, et cetera. So tracking project by project rather than pulling it into a separate pool and talking about it that way. So our first project we're going to talk about is Fire Station One. I think everybody's heard a lot about, oh, sorry, looks like my slides are a little mixed up. But Shannon, can you go? Yeah. So I think everybody is familiar with the backstory by Deborah Ashheim. The fabrication contract was approved in March of 2018. And last was delivered and installed in April of 2020. Deborah also distributed the backstory book to around 200 members and to everybody on the commission and committee. So I hope you had a chance to take a look at that and enjoy. From that project allocation, there was actually a little bit under $7,000 remaining. And that will indeed go into sort of a pool for general collection here for the future. Next is Light Paintings II. If you can back up one slide, Shannon. This is Light Paintings II by Narduli Studio, Susan Narduli. This is one of two pieces that comprise Light Paintings. And so we'll talk a little bit about Light Paintings I, but just to note that Light Paintings II was projected to be installed in spring 2020 and indeed it was installed just about the same time as backstory. This is a set of 85 digitally painted glass fins set in the dividing wall behind the permit counter. And the biophilia theme is reflected in this sunset to sunrise look. Then for Light Paintings I, which I don't have a picture for, I want to note that the south stairwell of the facility to have some construction issues and also some safety review issues that have significantly delayed that project. So did not go in at the same time as II did. But we are really anticipating, hoping and crossing our fingers that we should be able to install this in the summer, probably just over to the next fiscal year. Next is Lives That Bind. So we reviewed this before, but just to look back, this originated in the Arts Commission Directive in November of 2018 as part of that five-point plan to address the inequities expressed in the City Hall. And goals for this project were to expand the representation of artists of color in the Art Bank and also to create a display in the lobby of City Hall Annex that in some way provide a counterpoint to the visitor experience in history. So five new artworks were purchased and they were joined to pieces that were already in the collection and installed in summer, August 2020. And if you haven't already taken a look at that website, we have some great video. Next slide. Next, we have Belmar History and Art. Belmar History and Art began in August of 2018 with that percent for art allocation, civic center multipurpose. And it started at a certain smaller amount, but once we understood the Coastal Commission's special condition meant to acknowledge the history of the site, that commitment was increased and supplemented by a very generous enhancement from the Public Works Department. And that enabled the project to expand significant permanent elements that would not have been possible otherwise. So it is now substantially complete. However, we are still working on that website due to that website transition edits that we have to do. And there's some educational elements that we're still working on.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, well, okay, I know the substantial, it was like a half a million dollars from Public Works, correct? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. That sense of how that funding was chucked, you know, this big picture, how that funding was chucked for the various aspects of this project. That's a nice chunk of change.
It is a nice chunk of change. The bulk of that was for fabrication and installation of the massive which was about 300,000. Next slide?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry?
No, thank you. I figured it was for the fabrication. That's great.
Next is our, our reframe initiative. Next project or current project, City Hall mural. So again, in fiscal year 1819, it was that five-point plan. And at that point, some PFA funds were allocated. But the whole project was put on hold due to Belmar and has now resumed. And it will be our primary public art priority alongside City Arts. I think Shannon may present or will just mention the extra report that you got that was specifically a reframe retrospective. So I won't cover that, but there are some recent directives that pivoted this project. And Public Works is no longer covering the murals. They are now working on a youth activity sheet that will end up with a lobby display, which I think, we think is going to be a really positive continuation of the engagement portion of this project. And next I think we have, oh, yes, Administrative and Support Services. So those include honoraria, framing, installation of Art Bank works documentation. And in this, this slide, we show one of our pilot projects, which was also funded in Administrative and Support. So we were able to do an interdepartmental collaboration with the Office of Sustainability on these new EV charging stations. We got a sort of jumbo utility box project going. So those are viewable around Barnard Way right on the, on the beach there by the parking lot.
How many of those are there?
This was the only interdepartmental partnerships that we've done in the last few years. This took place this early 2020. And you can see that there's kind of two large toady boxes that right, these are supplying the EV chargers. The next slide is also about a pilot, more of a pilot and that, oh, do I not have it? Shoot. There's nothing in between. Okay. Well, I was going to say that we piloted a K-Rail project with the artist Sunny Alice on Main Street. And that turned out so well that we were able to use that as a sort of jumping off a lot of the art recovery projects that came out. That was enabled by Administrative. And then many documentation projects included, and now next slide, getting extra photographs taken, more current photographs taken of many of the items in our collection so that we could enhance our. Also documentation, the artist Manfred Mueller, whose work Twilight and Yearning was deaccession last year, is now working on a document, documentary, as noted before, about the work. And we're also talking to the family of the artist Gilbert Luhon, whose work, Another Magical Sunset, Santa Monica Beach, was also deaccession at the same time. That is Parking Structure III, which is being demolished. We were able to get some nice video of the site before the fencing went up. And we hope to incorporate some interviews with the family members who have created a an archive of Luhon's work. So we hope to have some video that supplement our public art archive page accession work. And lastly, for documentation, the CNG LNG, which is natural gas fueling station at the corner of Olympic and Fifth is going to be fenced in, unfortunately, part of an upcoming Public Works project. And this is going to reduce the accessibility to that work by Richard Wyatt Jr. So we went in there and did some close-up documentation so that we could enhance the public art archive digital experience. Folks who won't be able to get right up some personal to that work. Next is collections care and management. And that encompasses consultants for the collection, especially for the deaccession basals and for collections care, public art archive, transition consults. And other documentation removals and storage and care. So we had an RFQ that resulted in the contract with Lewis Fine Art. And Ms. Lewis helped us with that transition to public art archive, transferring a ton of information on what turned out to be over 450 records. It really ballooned from the 300 that she went in thinking we had. A lot of those, of course, are temporary works or that are no longer in the collection, but still needed to be documented. And additional services, we consolidated multiple off-site city offices and that led to many bank works being consolidated, stored or transferred over to City Hall facilities. A little bit of consultation from Leslie Elwood filling in when this, when my position was empty. And that is it for my slideshow and pretty much everything narrative. I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Naomi. Questions, comments? No? Thank you very much. Quite a quite an array of projects. Everyone, everyone involved deserves to be proud. Congratulations all.
And, and just to, if I could, Michael, very quickly, just to set this up. So this was us getting you last meeting and this meeting up to speed on this budget. And at the next meeting, we will be presenting to you the FY 2223 budget for your discussion and approval. So it's been a while since you've done this. We have new commission members since that have probably never done this before. So this was kind of bringing you up to speed on where we're at today. And so we can kind of reboot and get started fresh for the next.
Very good. Thank you, Shannon. Moving on, we're going to, for the Arts Commission members, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Somebody speaking? No? Okay. Um, there was approval of two separate documents meetings in November, November 15th of 21, one in which we considered the Red Car La Boss project on Euclid and the other in which we considered the reduction of the commission membership from 13 to 11. So anyone who was present in the November 15 meeting who wishes comment, critique, or if not to motion to approve.
And there's, there's two sets of minutes. There's the joint meeting that we need to move first and then the special Arts Commission meeting.
Right. The, the first one is the, the Red Car La Boss Euclid Avenue project.
Are we, we're looking at the joint?
Yes, yes, joint one, correct.
Uh huh. There was one?
November 15th?
Mary Elizabeth, do you have an amendment? Mary Elizabeth, do you have an amendment?
I do have an amendment for the one that's the commission. Are we starting with the one that's the committee first, or?
The, the joint one, yes, first, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll pipe in for the next one that's, that's committed.
Certainly.
Anyone wants to move these minutes?
I certainly will move, um, I'll move to, uh, approve the minutes for the joint meeting. Is there a second? Um, so we have a, a motion and a second.
Who was the second, please?
Uh, Mary Elizabeth. Thank you.
She wasn't there.
Didn't hear it all. I can't second that.
Okay.
I'll second, just, just to move it along.
All right. So Michael Baroff is, um, those who were there, Arts Commission members, um, in favor, we can do this by, uh, by voice. Aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right.
Passed by acclamation?
Okay. Now, um, Mary Elizabeth, you had, um, notes for the, oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen, go ahead.
We need someone to turn off their mic.
Trying to say something?
I, uh, she, her hand was up, but maybe she was voting.
Okay, um, so I, I couldn't second because I was having technical challenges to the, I missed the first 15 minutes of the other and so I'm updating the commission minutes to make a change that noted that I wasn't there on the roll call and I actually was, I, there was technical difficulty. So I was present for the entire commission meeting. I would like it so reflected in the minutes, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, I got that amendment. Thanks, Mary Elizabeth.
So, um, okay, Kathleen, I got you. Um, we haven't been able to hear you. We hear some kind of static noise that might be coming from you. But, um, yeah, tonight's been a lot of technicals, which is why I think we're all gonna be very happy to be in person next time. But, um, but, but thank you for being here, Kathleen. Sorry, the tech issues have been, you know, restricting you. Um, but we see you, yes. So, um, with, uh, Mary Elizabeth's, um, correction, um, anyone wish to approve the, the AC meeting, um, minutes?
I'll move to approve them.
Um, moved by Lori. Second? The Kathleen seconded. Um, okay, so, um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 All right. The, uh, minutes have been approved unanimously. Thank you so much.
I just want to say one thing.
Here's Eric. Go ahead, Glory.
This is very minor, but there was a typo in one of them, and I'm sorry, I was shuffling. I thought I was on mute and I wasn't. Um, but, uh, that, that wasn't the part with the dishes slamming, but, no, that wasn't me. But anyway, um, there's a typo in one of them, which is not, you know, we can still approve them and everything, but if anyone wants to fix that, it's in chair Masucci, it says Chari instead of chair.
That's me, Charlie. Thank you.
You will correct it.
All right. Um, we're, we're now going to segue into, um, for the remainder of what would be more like a traditional arts commission, um, meeting, and, um, I'd like to first begin by saying, um, I'm still here. So, um, a- a- as you know, um, I officially termed out last June and I had requested, um, to, uh, get another term. And, um, it, you know, it's, it's, we've been through a crisis and the city council has a lot, a lot to do. And they finally, um, got around to voting earlier this month, so I am, I'm, I'm going to be here for a while. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that I can remain as, as chair. We'll need to figure out, one, whether you would want that, or two, whether, um, that is even an option, because there are now um, guidelines having to do with, with term limits. Uh, it has been a strange, um, tenure as chair since my entire tenure as chair has been during COVID, which means we've only been meeting a few times, um. But, um, I'm, I'm grateful to, uh, to still be here and honored to be working with you all. Um, one thing I would like to do, um, in, in my time as chair is to really reflect on the subcommittees and the ad hocks. Um, I, I, I would hope that everybody would be on at least one subcommittee, and, and I'm, I'm going to encourage you to, um, get more involved and, and, um, certainly what I'd like, um, on the agenda for a small part of the next meeting will be, um, a robust discussion on subcommittee memberships and, um, and the opportunities for, um, making them even, even more effective than, than they are. Um, but, um, but thank you for, uh, for putting up with, uh, me and putting up with, uh, each other during this crisis. It's been, uh, and each other, I mainly meet technically, you know, um, as we glitch in and out. I'm pretty big on tech, as you may know, but I, I certainly don't think we're quite ready to replace the, uh, the human condition with, uh, staring at a bunch of screens. So I, I look forward to seeing you all next time in person. And with that, I'm going to switch it back to Lori for her, um, public art committee report.
Oh, hi, everyone. Much of what the public art committee has done, we did together today. Uh, the only other thing really was that, um, we did get a, a presentation from Naomi on, um, on some ideas for public art at the City Yards sanitation project, it's called. And this is a very preliminary state. They're working out now, uh, what they'll be looking for, what they'll be putting out there to artists. So we'll be back to you when, you know, with that, um, when it moves along a little bit. Otherwise, um, you know, it's also been COVID, so we haven't met other than the last, uh, couple joint meetings, so not much else to say. Look forward to meeting in person.
Thank you, Lori. Um, the Bergamont ad hoc group has been meeting, um, somewhat frequently, um, in, in the last months, and, um, and it's been a a busy time of change at Bergamont. As, as you probably know, um, a while back, the Worth Group, which was the management company contracted by the city to, um, to run the Bergamont, uh, infrastructure, um, had decided not to request, um, an extension of their contract or a new contract and, um, and bowed out. And, um, after, uh, a search by, uh, the city of which Shannon was on that, that, um, committee, um, Red Car, which is actually the management and ownership group, um, on the private part of Bergamont was, um, selected to be contracted to be the management team, and that has many, many synergistic advantages. As, as you know, Bergamont, what we call Bergamont is legally two properties, one run by the city and one privately owned formerly by Wayne Blank. Um, he sold it to a consortium of which Red Car is the sort of the over, overseer, and they have been very effectively, um, managing their part of the Bergamont, properties all throughout this, um, crisis and, and, and transition. Um, with, with Worth bowing out and Red Car taking over, it's going to be a much more streamlined and hopefully integrated Bergamont station once again, and, and, um, I, I think there's good, good reasons for optimism. Um, other, other good news is, um, Bergamont, uh, is 100% leased. There were a few vacancies, but that, um, is, uh, no longer taking, no longer the case. Um, the subcommittee was, was part of the, um, approval of, um, two, two new tenants, two quite different from each other. One is a, a comedy ensemble called The Crow, which, uh, promises to do some very, um, interesting site-specific, uh, um, activations, um, in their space and hopefully, um, you know, expanding out into, outside the space. And then the other is, is a, a project called Green Bus, which is, um, spearheaded by an interesting gentleman named Richard Lovett, and, um, Richard Lovett is a sort of a titan in the mainstream entertainment industry. He's the president of CAA, um, arguably the most powerful, um, theatrical, uh, talent agent in, in, in Hollywood. And, um, he's a, quite an aficionado, quite an aficionado and collector of, um, vernacular photography in addition to fine art photography. And, um, and he proposed creating a space in Bergamont, which would be part, um, sort of mini museum in which, um, highly curated, um, presentations of both, uh, again, you know, high art work and this, um, new recognition of vernacular populist, um, photography could be presented. And then, um, both The Crow and Green Bus promised to be, um, very exciting additions to the, uh, ecosystem and landscape that is Bergamont. So we're, um, we're, we're pretty happy about that. There have been, since Red Car took over, there have been meetings with, um, representatives of Red Car and, um, cultural affairs with the gallerists and the, um, and the, the Leesies at Bergamont and, and the beginnings of a, hopefully very positive, um, you know, relationship will happen. And there will, there will be a future meeting um, with the, uh, the tenants and, uh, and, and Shannon, most likely, and, uh, representatives of, uh, of the Berg ad hoc, um, soon. And, um, going forward, as you also know, um, there are, there are new recommendations and requirements for Bergamont to, um, transform part of its, of its space into, um, into housing. Hopefully some will be low-cost artist housing. Bergamont will still very much be an art center. That's not going to go away, but it will be expanded to include housing down the road, and, and a process will begin to try to imagine what that's going to be contemplated, and, um, and you'll certainly be hearing lots about that in, in, uh, certainly years, uh, more than months, um, ahead. Uh, so that's, that's what's going on at Bergamont, a time for a lot of change. And, um, and then, uh, go ahead, Lori.
Oh, just, just on, on the housing, and hopefully that will include affordable housing for artists, which we need so desperately.
Yes, uh, yeah, I, I did briefly mention that, um, that's the hope. Um, I, I think there's a, a strong case that can be made, and, and probably with a bit of lobbying and a little bit of, um, uh, public outreach, um, we can get the community behind that as well. But yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And I also wanted to say, I've had several people, um, mentioned to me, uh, recently how excited they are uh, about the quality of, uh, photography galleries at Bergamont. We've, we seem to be developing a niche in that area and being recognized for that, so.
Yeah, there's no question. There's a, a really strong presence. You're right, Lori, and it's, you know, there, there's some real world-class work that can be seen there on a, on a routine basis, and that's, uh, that's just, you know, great for Santa Monica, you know, but, but yeah, I, I agree with you. Thank, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, please, Kathleen.
Um, do you hear me?
Yes, we do. Yeah, hey.
Yay. Um, when you were talking about the possibility of, of artist housing, um, is there included, I don't know if there would be a live-work situation, but is there any possibility of day-use art studios connected with that or, and/or live-work situations?
I, I, I don't want to venture an answer. My guess is that's not really what, what is being proposed. I don't know that anything is per se off the table, but I don't think that's, that's certainly not the discussions I've heard. Now, I'm certainly, I'm, I'm not in the inner circle by any means of the information. Shannon probably has more, more insights into that, but I, my guess is that's, you know, the, the live-work thing, the spaces, hopefully with big enough people could do that, but they're certainly not going to, um, in, intrude into the, the already assigned, um, gallery spaces. That's my guess, but, but Shannon, it may, may correct me.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I think that we're kind of in a new moment with this site. We're kind of starting from scratch in some ways. We're not, but we are, um, given the requirements of the, the space moving forward. So I think I wouldn't want to put, take anything off the table as a possibility. And I've definitely mentioned live-work, um, as something if we get affordable housing. I think there's a lot of challenges with that that would need to be worked through. But I think that now is the moment to kind of re, you know, rethink what this might be, uh, and what we might want to push for.
Yeah, that sounds right. That sounds right. Thank you.
I mean, isn't the whole issue about the housing based on the state's housing element requiring the city of Santa Monica develop more housing, and their expectations are beyond the city's capacity. So the city's being pressed to create as much housing as possible, which may imply the challenge between just pure workspaces versus living spaces. So just a consideration, given the context of why they're building, why it's even happening at all.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess the official answer is we don't know, you know, but, but I, I think it would be, you know, not a easy lift, but, you know, as Shannon said, it's not off the table, but I don't think that's what the envisionment is at the moment. But I could be wrong. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Shannon, who has a lot to say. There's a lot of things going on, and, um, and thank you.
Um, and I'll be quick. I know we're a little over time that what we anticipated. Um, so for my manager's report, just a couple of things. We've had a lot of, um, activity on the City Hall mural project. Um, you've received an update from me, uh, or an updated report on all that had happened. Um, city council has gotten involved with this, this, as Naomi mentioned earlier, enacted in 2018, it's been on hold. Um, because of Belmar, we started moving again once Belmar was beat, and then, um, city council members started making actions about, um, covering it, forming ad hoc committees, and then that created a whole other kind of, um, circle of work, uh, that had to happen around how we were going to process this move forward. So after a lot of work, we're back, I think, with momentum moving forward. And, um, you can read it in the report, the covering of the murals no longer happening. And instead, we're doing an activity sheet for youth, so kind of a poster contest that will go up into the lobby of City Hall, and the goal will be that this, um, lobby area can become like a living, um, evolution of this project and what happens with the community engagements of it. Um, and so we have the activity sheet, we have a, a survey that's linked to in the report that, uh, you were got, you received, it sent you as well. Um, it's really kind of a broad, um, survey into what it means to representation of space and what stories are shown, what stories are not shown. Can you all hear me? I'm seeing frozen people. Uh, okay, okay, thank you. Um, and so, you know, we're really taking this as an opportunity to build on what we did in Belmar to create a more global program around the role of art in civic representation. And the mural is going to be the next project in this program, but we see this as a continuing program. We know there are a lot of histories that we want to uncover and really surface and highlight, um, as we move forward. And so we have the, um, activity sheet, we have the survey, and we currently have an RFP out for a consultant to kind of shepherd this effort moving forward and hope to have the consultant, um, or consultant team uh, identified and working to go into contracts in the next. So things are moving forward. Um, we have our City Hall mural subcommittee of the Arts Commission that's been meeting regularly for the past few months, um, to help guide this effort. We also have the city council ad hoc subcommittee, or working group, and we have a landmarks commission working group as well, although the, um, Arts Commission Subcommittee is the most active of, of all of those in terms of helping guide the of all of those in terms of helping guide this. So in that Subcommittee is Michael Baroff, Lori, Janine Jackson, and Deepa Subramaniam, and Pablo Carr. And so that group is kind of helping guide this project. Any questions about the City Hall mural project? Okay.
Look, if I may, a little quick comment.
Yes.
I mean, I think it's moving really well, and actually personally and candidly, I feel in the, over time, my original concern that this was going to be very politicized, I have a strong sense that that's been diffused or minimized, and there's more of a collaborative, people actually engaging in the process for, for, for the good of the whole situation. So I'm just acknowledging what was, I had the concern or image, but I think we're, it's gotten away from that, you know, thanks to everyone's work. So I think it's good.
Yeah, yeah, we seem to be on a, on a good path forward, for sure, and it's a really complex issue. There's going to be a lot of moments along the path that are going to be challenging, but I think we need to go back with eyes wide open, that when you tackle these complex issues, that, that's what you need to be prepared for. Okay.
Happy to hear it.
Right. So next up is Art of Recovery, and that project is continuing. We now have our production partners in place, which are a number of business districts and other arts groups in town and in the region that can help us see these projects moving forward. It's taken us a long time to get this set up, but we're really hoping that now that it is, we'll be pretty nimble, able to move quickly. We have a new project that's just been being installed this week. It's on Montana Avenue, and they have, over the course of 10 blocks, custom tree lighting, a different lighting design each block over 10 blocks. And so it's being installed over the past week plus. It's continuing to be installed. We'll be having a, contributing a press release about that coming forward, or moving forward, and really encourage you, it's a great opportunity to go and walk the distance on Montana and get a bite to eat, get a, get a massage, get a mani-pedi, anything you need. Really trying to encourage, again, put traffic but that's kind of our newest project. There will be a couple other projects unveiled in the coming weeks and months. And I think that we also have done kind of a closeout survey with our first round of projects that we funded over the past year and a half. And at our June meeting, we plan to do a really comprehensive report out for all of you about Art of Recovery and the impacts and the projects that have been supported and the number of artists impacted, the number of community members impacted, et cetera. So that's a preview of what's coming in, in June as a kind of final report for the first cycle of Art of Recovery as we get moving on our next cycle. Any questions about Art of Recovery? Okay, so last up is Future of Meetings. So the city council is meeting back, is starting to meet back fully in person in April 12th, and they are moving towards boards and commissions meeting back in person as well. And so we're looking at the possibility, possibility of our June meeting being back in person. And the one caveat to that, or one of the caveats to that is the location where we used to meet, the Ken Edford Center, may not be available. So we would need to find another location, have to coordinate that with other commissions that might be meeting on the same date. But, and I asked this of the PAC, the Public Art Committee, I, my sense is that people want to be back meeting in person, especially given all of our tech difficulties. And so if you have a big, strong feeling one way or the other, please shoot up or email me. But our assumption is, is that this group really would prefer to meet in person finally. I see some nodding heads.
Absolutely. And Shannon, I have a clarification. I may be mistaken, but I thought, starting in June, monthly meetings were going to resume. Is that not the case?
Uh, starting in July, after the end of the fiscal year, was when the council, I think in the last meeting, I would need to go back and check, but I'm, I'm thinking that they may start back monthly in July.
So then if we do meet in June, then in a sense, starting in June, we would, hopefully, be back to monthly meetings, or maybe. Listen. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Yeah. I, we, I think we've all gotten used to, we'll see. Yeah.
Rolling with it, yeah. Yeah, I think the current directive is quarterly through the end of the fiscal year, and after that is kind of no specific direction, but we could go back to the D halls at that point.
Got it, yeah.
And we still don't have our, our June date yet, right?
Correct. That's the other thing is, is the city just last week designated two new city holidays, Suzer Chavez Day, which is the coming Monday, and Juneteenth, which this year will be recognized on the third Monday in June, which is the date of our June meeting. So we'll need to reschedule our June meeting. Typically, what we do when we reschedule the holidays is we make them the next Monday. But we'll send out an email to y'all to check on availability for that rescheduling.
Very good. Thank you so much. It's, it's a long night, but if there's anyone who has any announcements or wants to share with us any amazing exhibits they've seen, or things that you're personally doing, we're going to start doing that. It's something Michael Baroff had suggested, that we start kind of like sharing with each other anything. So if anyone wants to tell us what they're up to, or what they've seen, or what they might like to see, please, this is your forum.
Well, because you mentioned my name attached to that, I guess I'll have to go first.
You have to.
In the context, I mean, I've been going out to performances, theaters, I mean, a couple of things at the Broad Stage here in Santa Monica. I went to a wonderful Gamber Music Concert on Second Street, the group called Kaleidoscope. It's a wonderful conductorless orchestra, wonderful young people and others, you know, play all sorts of classical music. Gone to the Geffen downtown, took the expo downtown, you know, to, to the Mark Taper, saw Blade Play there, saw Power of Sail at the Geffen and Epigenia. And, and last week, the wonderful, the Broad, they have a series of National Geographic presentations with wonderful photographers. I learned all about insects and parasites. Fascinating. So some of that, so it's, I'm, I'm feeling comfortable getting out there is my message, so. I'm joined.
Good for you. Anybody else? Go ahead. Go ahead, Mary Elizabeth.
I'll chime in. I accepted a new position as Head of Government and Community Affairs at the Getty, so I've been there for a few months.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. Like that. Um, they just opened at the Getty Center, my office at the Getty Center, but I over, I, I do government affairs for both museums, plus the Research Institute and the Conservation Institute. So the Getty Center just had about two weeks ago, Pusson and the Dance opened a couple of weeks ago, an exhibit that incorporates, you know, his passion and the way he did a lot of work around dance. And so it incorporates modern dancers from Los Angeles, choreographers, and their work into the exhibition. So it's kind of interesting through videography, if anybody's interested in that. And April 5th, the Getty Villa opens a new exhibit on Persia. If, as you're continuing to get out there, there's two other options.
Yeah, I'll be at the Getty on Saturday. Great.
Congrats, Mary Elizabeth.